She had to ask me what an FTE stood for.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's school board meeting for Independent School District 191, Burnsville, Eagan Savage. I'll call tonight's meeting to order. It's August 23rd, 6:30 PM. And I'll ask Director Miller to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you and welcome. First item on our agenda is for the approval agenda. Do I have a motion? So moved by Director Schatz, second by Director Miller. Any discussion or questions? Seen none? All those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We will move right into the information part of our meeting. First up, we will have the Summer Burnsville Youth Collaborative Report. Our presenter will be Jason Sellers, who's our adult education coordinator. And it looks like he has company. And I'll let Tom introduce them.
Yep. Good evening Superintendent, Chair, Directors. I wanted to have the opportunity as soon as possible to sit in front of you and have our folks share with you some pretty exciting innovative design that they've worked on this summer. The chief architects are Jason Sellers and Stephen Jensen. And I wanted them to be able to give you a rundown of what happened this summer. It was phenomenal. They did great work for us. Thank you. Jason?
Hi, everybody. It's nice to see you again, this time in a different capacity. We have a couple of videos that are embedded in our PowerPoint that we're not going to show, maybe the end one if we have time. But at the request of Superintendent, we are here to talk about a different program that we created for students in grades five through eight this summer. The BYC Summer Program, as Stephen elaborated on, is a partnership that has been existing but was implemented in a little bit different way. There are three things that you'll know by the end of this presentation. We like to model the same things that we expect our instructional staff to do. The first of which, you'll be able to understand BYC Summer Program information and data. Second, you'll be able to, in some ways, analyze how BYC Summer Program students are realizing our mission. And third, evaluate how summer programming achieved its goals aligned to Division 191, which is at the core of what we do.
Hi, everybody. So, the BYC Summer Program, as you can see, as part of our demographics, we offer programming for fifth graders, students entering sixth grade through eighth grade this year. We had 273 students that were enrolled for the summer with an average of 149 attending each day. That was five days a week, eight hours a day, for six weeks. And in here, you'll see a picture. This is Mr. Hooper, a licensed teacher, helping some students with the engineering Lego robotics class that they had, where they were able to program, build, and operate their Lego robotic. As you can see, our demographics represent our community, as is. And you can see on the bottom there that 9% of those students that we had were special ed. And we partnered with our special ed department to make sure that we were mainstreaming our students and we had the right supports available for the students to be a part of this program. You'll see on the side, there's a picture of one of our Sphero Ball classes. They actually engineered and developed swimsuits for these Sphero Balls, where they actually had to come up with a design to make propel the Sphero Ball through the water and race each other. We continue to have strong partnerships in our program. The city of Burnsville has been an outstanding partner for us in help creating the Burnsville Youth Collaborative, as well as the Burnsville YMCA. One of our new partners that we worked with is the University of Minnesota in providing STEM activities, engineering activities, with materials, curriculum to offer to our students. Continue to have support with our Community Development Block Grant to offer services. The Garage has been another outstanding partner with us in offering music production classes for our students. And again, Wilderness Inquiry has always been one of our partners in helping us culminate the summer program with a camping trip. This year, they went to Afton State Park for three days. This is the slide that has our video, one of our videos, with the culminating project of the students that were involved in the music production class, where they actually had the ability to design, write, and perform their songs.
That's a really great transition to the academic components of the program. At the Garage, we sort of worked with Jack and other partners to retool, so that there was more of a curriculum framework, better aligned to standards, almost like an academic class. So we embedded ELA components of the Common Core around writing specifically. We also embedded 21st century technology skills around computer literacy. It's a state-of-the-art program. Moving forward, we'd like to build that partnership even more in a couple of new ways that we are currently partnering with other departments in the district to work out. In terms of the academic classes that were offered at Eagle Ridge, there was a wide variety. We've listed them here. Computer programming with Sphero Balls, but that's really next-generation engineering and science standards aligned to the next-generation standards that are going to be coming out. The engineering and design of Lego robotics, so they would build certain machines using the Legos that had to actually perform certain tasks, and they had to program that to happen, very similar to what you would see in an after-slow activity, except for a little bit more intensive. The STEM class through the University of Minnesota Extension, we had four sections of that. We would have liked more, couldn't fit anymore. The students in that class really loved it. Then there were Writing and Reading Development. That was really the focus of summer. The Leader in Me, Music Production, Performance Art, and the Create Your Own Superhero classes were all aligned to the ELA Common Core standards, grades five through eight. Additional enrichment opportunities, the University of Minnesota also offered us a Cooking and Culinary Arts class. You may not think of this as something that's technically very academic, but in actual effect, it was. And the feedback from parents specifically around this class was exceptionally positive. In addition to other fun activities, students had to attend summer school a certain percentage of the time in order to be able to go to trips like Valley Fair, Conquer Ninja Warrior, and the fun stuff. They had to do sometimes the not-so-fun stuff, the learning too. This is an example of the new learning plan that we used. It's been modified from a previous place that I worked around writing, math, science, and social-emotional support. According to the state of Minnesota, when you run a targeted services program, you have to align it to the learning requirements of the state. And so, this is an example where we used localized assessments that were embedded within the content curriculum and taught by the teachers. So, these assessments were all given to every single one of the students that took these classes. Those assessments were aligned to specific skills that were aligned to specific state standards. An example, oh, it's not in there. It's cut. There was another slide that was in here that actually gave not only a scope and sequence for the six weeks, the eight hours a day for the class, but in addition to that, it also gave a sample of the lesson plan and what it looked like and where the core standards were aligned for that particular day, the next day, and for the rest of that unit. The last slide, it features a video that is embedded around the academic classes that were offered at Eagle Ridge. And, you know, we can either show you that, I think, or if you have questions, we'd happily take them.
Sure.
Yeah, why don't you show us that last?
That one had me a little worried.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, that was excellent. Thank you for that presentation. Are there any board member comments or questions? Director Schatz?
That looks like way more fun than I had this summer. So, I do have a couple of questions about the programs. Are the stats that you had from this year similar to what you've had in past years?
Well, I wasn't here in past years, and Stephen wasn't involved in summer programming in past years. And so, I don't know. I can tell you that in terms of the academic achievement that we showed and in terms of the engagement and the length and breadth of the program, it all is much different. For example, last summer, there was a BYC Summer Program. It was not connected in any way to any academics. It was more of a, sort of a drop-in program that students could engage in, and it was built through a partnership with the city and the Y, and those grant funds supported that with about 40, 50 students. This is a much bigger program, including the fifth graders, and it was much more academically focused.
So this is an entirely revamped new programming that you've had in previous years? Okay, that's pretty great participation for that first year. And how do students find out about this program?
So, in the spring, this all kind of happened a little bit late. And so, when we agreed to take on the project, we immediately sent out letters to parents, but we also followed up with phone calls. We had some of our staff placed at each of the three middle schools during lunchtimes and during free time, so that students could sign up. We brought the Sphero Balls there, and they programmed them and had them run around the floor, so they could see it and see that it would be a fun time, other things that we had. In addition, I believe that we also, well, we met with the principals of the elementary schools and said, "We are now taking on fifth grade. Please communicate with your parents, cultural liaisons." Those were the avenues that we used.
In addition, word of mouth was also a big one. After our first two weeks, we had other families calling. I think I had phone calls every day.
Yeah.
"Can we sign up? Can we sign up?" And so, we would continually take new students throughout the program.
Excellent. Let's have one more. And so, as I understand, this is a very academically-heavy program now and in its first year. And is there any way that we'll be able to correlate any sort of success of participation in this program to an academic success in the schools?
There are basically two options with that. And the one I articulated here was really taking a look at specific sets of skills that students are learning aligned to the instruction that's happening in the class in summer, based upon standards, and using localized assessments to see if they've mastered that skill. And when you look at the ILP, the Individual Learning Plan, you'll see that, you know, they didn't master, they partially mastered, they totally mastered, or they exceeded, right? The second option is typically used in most places, is our MAP scores. MAP scores are a good indicator of student growth in specific areas, but they aren't solely indicative of what would happen inside of a summer program. For example, if a student goes and they go to the library a lot and they read a lot, that reading could impact that score and have nothing to do with the summer program. And so, in this instance, and in future instances, we can certainly take MAP scores to try to develop a correlation, but that would be 100,000-foot level view of the actual learning that would take place in the program.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Director Alt?
So to dovetail on Director Schatz's question, would it be safe to assume that some of the results from the summer program could be used by teachers for individual students in their classes to understand where the student ended up in the spring, where they started in the fall, and to see, okay, if they were part of the BYC, how did they fare? If they were not part of the BYC, how did they fare?
Yes, potentially.
Yep. Okay. And is it fair to assume that at both locations, there's consistency now in programming?
Both locations, I'm sorry.
Eagle Ridge and Nicollet?
So, we only had, our program was only at Eagle Ridge.
Only at Eagle Ridge. Gotcha.
Yep. And so, we took all the fifth graders, and then we had sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Those students that also, so it was six weeks long for eight hours a day. So, for the first two weeks of June, many students were with us eight hours a day. For the next three weeks, on the other side of the Fourth of July break, some students also did enroll and go to the other summer schools option that happened over at Nicollet from about eight in the morning to about noon. And then, we would bus them back to our program for the second half of the day if they wanted to. Most of our students, though, and I don't know the number off the top of my head, but most of our students attended our program solely. We had about maybe 20 students a day that were coming over from the other program.
But it looks like it's a pretty good mix of both, kids from both schools.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, this program was, it was located at Eagle Ridge, but any fifth grader, any sixth grader, any seventh grader, any eighth grader from any school could apply.
And just a final comment, recognizing some familiar faces in the pictures, it's personally gratifying to see the smiles and the joy on their faces. So, thank you.
Sure. Any other board member comments, questions? Director Vanden?
Yeah, question, and again, I brought this up last year. My concern, this is a great program. I love the program. My concern's always been the funding. And I don't know how it's changed. So, the Youth Collaborative was partially funded by the city of Burnsville, partially by the district. How's the funding changed in the last year, and where are we at relative to how that, the program? Is it, because otherwise, I'm just worried about the sustainability, because I think you guys are growing it, and it's getting to be more important, but the funding still concerns me.
I'll let Steve handle the grant pieces, because that is uniquely him and his role with regard to BYC. In terms of targeted services, a targeted services program through statute raises funds for students that show up. So, if you have 100 students that show up and MDE decides to reimburse at a rate of, let's say, $5 a head for your own district, then it's 100 times five, times however many hours those students were in class, and that gives you a projected budget. And so, we align our budget very tightly based upon that targeted services reimbursement from the state of Minnesota to ensure that we do not lose money going to deficit and that we have a little bit of wiggle room there. But in addition to that, there's been a partnership that's existed, BYC, as you know, and I'll let Stephen talk about that.
I think all the partnerships have played a different role, whether it be a grant, whether it be staff or curriculum. Like, University of Minnesota Extension offered up their curriculum and their resources to us, which minimizes our costs. We continue to have the Community Development Block Grant that we work through the city of Burnsville with and Julie Dorcheck, which has been a great partnership, and they are continuing to work with them on that. As well as Autobrimer Trust Fund is also, we just re-upped for another year of funding from them to offer more services to put back into this program.
In a nutshell, I guess I would say this. We would always ensure program fidelity to the financial end of it through the targeted services revenue. The block grants add an additional component that allow us to do enrichment activities and other pieces that the targeted services revenue wouldn't necessarily provide. So, a lot of, for example, the field trips that took place, they're motivational for the students. They are also, in some cases, educational, and the block grants can help pay for pieces like that for staff to go and attend and supervise.
As I recall, the block grant, at least the one from the city of Burnsville, was set to be reduced. So, essentially, they had a big number early on, and then they wanted, I'll say, wean the city off of the block grant over time. Is it increasing? Is it staying the same?
It's been pretty consistent in staying the same. I know the city of Burnsville has funds that they have slowly reduced due to other costs that they have involved, even with the Garage, which is part of the collaborative anyways, just reallocating how some of these funds are being used.
And you're confident that the program can go forward for at least another year?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Couple?
More.
A question maybe that plays into clarifying. Is this being run differently with targeted services dollars than prior BYC programs?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think that might be the confusion. The prior BYC programs, we're not accessing this targeted services stream. The targeted services stream, if we have 50 kids show up, it will pay for 50. If we have 500 show up, it will pay for 500. So, as long as the programming model is fit within the projected budget that Jason was talking about, we have the capacity to sustain, to grow, or to reduce it based on what we're wanting, as long as the state would continue that funding. Does that help?
Sure. Thank you.
Because the Burnsville Youth Collaborative was operating consistently aligned with targeted services, it only made sense for us to meld the two programs together.
And that's what's new about this summer and about this program?
Hence, the academic integration, because the state requires that. And so, that's why we had to do that.
It's exciting. Thank you.
Any other board member comments, questions? Well, thank you for that presentation. It's very informative and good to see the success that you guys are having. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our information agenda is a report on advancement via individual determination, more commonly known as AVID, you know, the summer institute. Presenting tonight will be Dr. Jenna Mitchler, Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment. And accompanying her will be Jeff Pope and Franny Becker. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Schmidt, Board of Directors and Superintendent Amoroso. I'm here tonight, as you mentioned, with Franny Bakair and Jeff Pope. And they're going to share a little bit with you about our AVID programming that we had throughout the summer, and then what we are planning for the year ahead.
All right. Good evening, Board, and also Chair Alt and Directors. I'm Jeff Pope, and I'm one of the AVID team here. And as District Director, I'll be transitioning as a teacher to Eagle Ridge next year. And so, to continue my track in the teaching and learning and also future instructional leader. Wanted to talk with you a little bit today about what happened this summer, and particularly with Summer Bridge. So, advancement via individual determination, as you know, is a college and career readiness system. And the Summer Bridge specifically is a specific leg of that program. And with Summer Bridge, it's offered, we've had it offered for the last, we've had it offered for the last six years, and as part of a Lakeville-Burnsville Collaborative. For today, in the presentation overview, we'll be going over AVID Summer Bridge, as well as talking about what will AVID look like in the future. And Franny will catch you up and talk with you about that. So, let's talk about Summer Bridge. Summer Bridge is, Summer Bridge is part of that collaborative as between Lakeville and Burnsville. It's been, we've offered that program in the last six years. And what's been really important about that is based on state integration. There's a state integration statute where we, as Burnsville, have that partnership with Lakeville to do integrated, to have integrated opportunities. And part of that is Summer Bridge. So, what we do is work throughout the year. We collaborate with Lakeville to develop the program as it will happen each summer. And so, I meet with the Lakeville counterpart and then develop, develop what the curriculum will be, teachers being hired, all those types of things. The other part of it that's really important to note is that it is offered in grade six, seventh, and eighth grade, usually around, we serve about 120 kids each year. And this year was pretty much the same. We also, specifically for Burnsville, we looked at the academic middle, because in AVID, just like the elective class that's offered during the year, we focus on really providing those opportunities for students who are in academic middle and starting as early as the end of fifth grade. Kids will be going into sixth grade, sixth to seventh, and then seventh to eighth. And each, AVID offers a specific curriculum that is designed, not just summer, not just a summer course or just what you would see in a summer class, but really is interactive and based on collaboration, building college career readiness skills. And also, the kids are really getting the benefit of getting a leg up on next year's math. So, if you're a fifth grade, you're going to be getting standards and in that three-week period, you're going to be getting standards and getting approaches for what you're going to see in the next year. And that is a huge advantage to the students who are also, who are participating. What's also important to note is that throughout, the teachers, the teachers there are there to interact with the students. So, when you walk into this classroom, you're going to see a lot of, you'll hear a lot of noise, but it'll also be very organized noise and very, very intentional. And that's been the part of, that's been the part of this work that has really benefited students. The other part is that we usually work in a field trip, and there's a picture at the end of all of us, including Lakeville, of students who, in the program. And we went to the Twins Ballpark this year, and not to watch ballgames, so, you know, don't worry about that. It's more about, it's more about math. And that visit is based on math standards. And the person who actually operates the Twins' visit is a former principal that I used to know in South Washington County that I found, so that was really helpful to know. The students in and of themselves, and Lakeville selecting their side, Burnsville, we select ours. And, but we look at kids who are comparable. And we do use, we do use a couple of metrics to determine that, and that's based on state standards, the academic middles. We look at some MCAs and MAP scores just to determine the kids who will participate, because we had to have some level of academic, some way to be able to tell academic middle and skill level. And so, that's the important part to note there, as well as, as well as, you know, activities of just students who are willing to, because they still have to apply. Students still have to apply to be a part of it. So, we definitely have to have the individual determination to be a part of it. So, that's a basic overview of our, of AVID Summer Bridge. And I'm going to hand it over to Franny to talk with you about AVID in, AVID in the future.
So, hello. I am Franny Bakair. And with Jeff moving back into the classroom at Eagle Ridge, and we are very lucky as a district that he is staying with us, I am going to be trying very hard to step into his shoes and continue the work with AVID as the new AVID District Director. So, where we're going, AVID next year, is at this point, in all of the secondary sites, in their school improvement plans, there is a reading goal. And that reading goal is based around the AVID critical reading strategy. So, I am working with all of the secondary principals and the BLTs to provide support on what that would look like in bringing that critical reading goal school-wide. What does that framework look like when we step outside of the AVID elective class? Also, the professional development that we have developed for all of secondary. So, in the upcoming year, we are bringing sixth through 12th grade together on the three- in the upcoming year, we are bringing sixth through 12th grade together on the three professional development days, and they are going to be working on writing. One of the frameworks within AVID is WICER, so, writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. So, the sixth through 12th grade teachers will be identifying and looking at what is the writing in their content area, and they will be developing an action plan for how we can increase the writing within content areas, how we can have some vertical alignment in the rigor of writing that is happening within each of the content areas. Again, directly going back to the statement that all of our secondaries are AVID sites, and what does AVID look like when we step outside of the AVID elective classroom? And continuing to support the AVID elective classrooms, that Jeff has done a phenomenal job in the last couple of years, supporting the teachers and developing an incredibly strong AVID elective classroom program.
Thank you. We'll take questions.
Yeah, thank you. Any board member comments or questions? Director Luth.
It's been exciting for me to watch how AVID became introduced to the district, how it grew in the district, and how it's pervasive now in the district, and I want to thank you, Jeff, because you are a key, absolute key component for that happening. I'm going to, I'm going to miss you coming to board meetings, but then again, I'm retiring in a few months anyway, so, hey, timing is great. But I am encouraged, though, having you come, you know, have you in the classroom with all this kind of background you have, you're going to be a phenomenal teacher for Eagle Ridge, and they are so fortunate to have you. Franny, you didn't have enough to do, really? I had her at a SPA committee recently, and this is one very busy person, let me tell you. And so, we're quite fortunate as well to have you step into some big shoes that Jeff leaves for the program. I want to commend this summer program, Bridge program, because I think the bridging has to do with bridging from the past year to the new year, and there is the summer slide, there's a lot of different terms for that, and I particularly am enthused about the academic middle, because I happen to have two kids who are literally 50th percentile students. One did okay, the other one learned how to thrive regardless, but they tend to, they don't fit the programs on either end, if you will, I don't want to be derogatory here, but to have a program in the summertime and help them with that bridging, because those are probably the students that could suffer the summer slide and need that bridge more than anybody. So, thank you very much for that program, and I really like what I hear, and I'm excited about the stuff that's going to happen this year, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Luth. Any other board member comments or questions? I was just, one quick question, I was curious, how many, you said there was about 50 from Burnsville, how many from Lakeville participated?
Seventy.
Seventy, okay, so about 120.
Excellent. And it varies from year to year, because when we host it, we have more, when they host it, they have more.
It's the home site, yeah.
Home field advantage.
That makes sense. Well, thank you so much for that presentation, very informative, and thanks for all you do for these kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing up at the desk will be Dr. Jenna Mitchler, she'll be giving us a report on new teacher induction.
Great, thank you, Chair Schmidt. So, we had a really exciting week here, and we had all of our new teachers with us from Monday through Wednesday, so August 20th through 22nd, and we had, I'm just kidding, we had the CISA department hosting these folks, trying to help them feel welcome here, because we're really happy to have them, and CISA now, as you know, is comprised of curriculum, instruction, and assessment, as well as special education, so, the slide just calls that out for you, that we collaboratively created the programming for these new staff. We had approximately, we thought we would have around 70 new teachers, we are still in the process of hiring some teachers, so we had a little less than this at our, at our new teacher induction, but everyone who had been onboarded through HR was with us, and that's pretty comparable to previous years, is what I've heard. So, we had several facilitators throughout the three days, and that included, as you can see listed here, the BEA, the Burnsville Education Association. We have a district advisory committee for culturally proficient school systems, so we had folks from that group that were representing and facilitating sessions for us. Of course, folks from the CISA team, both of the folks you just saw here with us were facilitating sessions. HR, human resources, provided some, some help with us for breakfasts on day one and day three, which was phenomenal, and we had technology, so Rachel Gordon was with us and provided some information about Schoology and synergy, and really helped the new teachers get grounded in some of those tech platforms that we use. We also had Headway come in and work with us, and they did some teacher self-care work that was on our last day, which was actually pretty timely, as you can imagine, by the end of three days of intensive work, the new staff were all just really looking forward to some time to think about self-care. So, I covered most of this already, but as I said, you know, we had really great representation and help from all districts, I'm sorry, all departments within the district, and Special Ed, of course, did some work with their processes around Special Ed forms, and we had eight hours, I should mention, of CPSS, explicit CPSS training for those new teachers, and then, of course, embedded that CPSS work into the rest of the time that we spent with, with everyone as well. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you have about these last three days. They really were phenomenal, and I should mention, actually, before we do that, that we, we did a survey at the end of the three days, and just got the data back this morning, we were sifting through it, and the numbers are 97.3% of the new staff responded yes to the question or the statement. I gained useful knowledge about District 191's vision, mission, goals, and the departments within it, and I think part of that, I must say, is due to the Superintendent and her wonderful speech in the beginning, because she really connected Vision 191 and the idea of future-ready and community-strong to, to the rest of the three days, so, it was phenomenal. It's great.
Thank you. Any board member questions or comments? Director Vandenboom?
Just a quick question, because a lot of really good content, the question I have is for the rest of the teachers that aren't brand-new, is there, I'll call it a short course, that might, because there's new stuff every year, right?
Yeah, yeah, there is.
So, is there, or do we have a similar kind of short course to kind of induct onto the new things for some of the existing staff?
Yeah, you bring up a really good point, and it's true, and technology platforms, of course, come into our system, and we need to be helping folks become very, have high efficacy and know how to use those things well. So, we have our built-in professional development days throughout the year, the 28th is our big all-district PD day, August 28th, so that's coming up next week, and then we have another one on October 1st and March, mid-March sometime, I can't remember the exact date right now, but those are all opportunities for us to touch base with staff. We also really value coaching as a form of professional development in the district, and so, we're trying to do as much as we can to help partner with teachers who are in classrooms, so that we can work with them within their context and do some embedded look at data and data analysis as well.
Very good. Just out of curiosity, if there's a new teacher that starts after your induction, is there a way for them, is it recorded, is it something that they can see, is, so, how do you, I'm just not sure if there's an opportunity to kind of take some of the newer folks that may not have started right away to, and get them up to speed.
Yeah, that's a really good point, and I wish I had the number in front of me of how many were still looking to onboard, I think it's very few, but I do know that we had one person this year join us who didn't onboard in time last year, and so, they joined us for the new teacher induction this year, and said that they found it really beneficial. Of course, they work closely with their building principals and the deans in their buildings, if they're at a secondary site, to sort of get up to speed as well, but I like that idea of recording things.
Oh, great, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other board member questions or comments? Well, I know from my experience, onboarding is one of the most important things for new employees, and so, this program is exciting, and I do concur with your question, Director Vandenboom, you know, we should have something recorded, or, you know, for, you know, the later onboards, maybe your onboards kind of thing, I know in my company, we do that, you know, we have, you know, a bunch, we call them WebXs, you know, recordings, but nonetheless, but I think it's one of the most important things to make them familiar with kind of the organization, you know, so to speak, kind of, like you said, our vision, our goals, and all that stuff, so, that would be a great thing to, you know, to add to the already, the program for those who are able to participate, fantastic, and I'm sure they do get a lot out of, you know, a lot out of it, so, thanks for coordinating that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next information item is our Back to School Report, and the presenter will be our Superintendent Cindy Amoroso.
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback on what Dr. Mitchler just shared with us by starting out reminding you that we did have our new teacher workshop this week. As Jenna said, I was able to address the group on their first morning, and it's one of the most exciting days of the year to see those new teachers, and, you know, some of those teachers are not brand-new to the profession, obviously, but new to our district, and that's always a really fun, fun time of the year to welcome teachers new to our district. So, with that, we took an opportunity to get to know some of them, and so, right now, we're going to show you a little get-to-know-you video featuring some of those 70 teachers that are coming into our district this fall.
My favorite teacher is Mrs. Williams, she was my fifth-grade teacher, but then she went on to be my mentor as I looked into becoming a teacher.
My favorite teacher growing up was probably my high school band instructor, Mr. Brow. Shouts out to Mr. Brow.
My favorite teacher was Mr. Barker, he was my high school biology teacher, and he made the whole environment fun, because he got to know his students, and he really built a strong relationship.
He was great, because he always demanded the most of his bands and the most of his students, so that we all succeeded.
My favorite teacher is Susan Spencer, I'm still in touch with her, she was my sixth-grade teacher, she was really the very first teacher that I knew cared about me.
My favorite teacher was Mary McHugh, she taught math in a very small rural town, I had her for seventh through 12th grade, she made a really difficult, challenging subject visual, she was able to draw everything out and make me be able to see what math meant.
My favorite teacher growing up was Mrs. Cassilius, she was somebody that really held me accountable and pushed me to see a lot of different perspectives.
My favorite teacher growing up was my dad, which is super annoying, reflecting, because he made really lasting relationships with other kids, and I have watched that, I mean, I already had a relationship with him, but it was, it was inspiring to watch him.
How to be adaptable and how to communicate with other people, and see their perspective and work together.
The most important thing I learned in school is who I was.
Probably to just not take everything so seriously, like, there are some points in life where you just need to think to yourself, hey, this isn't that big of a deal, so I'm not going to worry about it that much, really helped me be a more relaxed person, and make me happier.
I, I mean, like, as my schooling has continued, I, I've grown throughout school, and I've, you know, school has helped me find myself.
The most important thing I learned in school is that there's so much more to learn.
191 is investing in middle schools, and I love the middle school model when it comes to interdisciplinary curriculum and teaming and supporting kids from all different directions.
I'm drawn to places that are about educating the entire child, and with programs like PBIS, AVID.
The pathway program of the high school, District 191's incorporated into that type of mentality.
I feel like so much is in place here for students of various cultures, various needs, and I'm really excited for that.
It's important to me to find a place where I can really connect with kids and be, be their person, and 191 is hopefully letting me do that.
I heard Yanni, and then I heard Laurel, and then I heard both, and I was stuck on Laurel, but I'd say Yanni.
I don't have any clue what you're talking about.
It was never Yanni, hello, it was Laurel the whole time.
I heard two people talking about it over there, like, I don't know what the heck's going on. I have a Google search in my future, is what I'm guessing.
I want to say thank you specifically to Wes Dre, our new communications specialist, who put that video together and made sure it was ready for tonight, that was a great job, Wes, and you're probably seeing his work before you've actually met Wes, because he's not, he's not in the room tonight, but when you see him next, you can give him a thank you for that. As you know, all of our staff will be back to work next week, and we'll hold our all-staff kickoff event on Tuesday, August 28th in the morning. All of our school sites, building sites, all district sites will be closed to the public from 9:00 AM to noon, so that all of our staff can attend that welcome-back kickoff. This year, our focus is going to be on hearing from our students. They are the why for all we do, so this will be an opportunity for all of us to come together and be inspired by their voices, their experiences, and their hopes for the future. I have a few other details just to share with you and our viewers, Burnsville High School and our alternative high school held their orientation events this week, open houses at every school take place next week, with our Early Childhood Special Education holding its open house here at Diamond Head on September 6th. All of these details are on our website at ISD191.org, and of course, the school year starts on September 4th, the day after Labor Day, for our students in grades one through 12, with our kindergarteners starting on Thursday, September 6th, and Early Childhood Special Education classes starting on September 10th. We made great progress last year with Vision 191 changes and improvements, and I actually was just starting a list here as I was listening to our last board reports about the progress and the improvements that we've made, but our work is still not done. We continue to invest in and implement the changes that are part of Vision 191, and I look forward to the start of a very exciting year here in Burnsville, Eagan Savage. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Any board member comments or questions? Director Miller?
I loved that video, it was great, so, I assume I will have a very imminent opportunity to share that out over social media, correct? We'll get that going? Good.
Yes, our communications director says yes.
Excellent.
I'm sure that will be linked on our website, front page of our website also.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we will move to our committee reports, our first committee report is our technology report, chaired by Director Vandenboom.
Thank you, Chair Schmidt. The Technology Committee met this past Tuesday afternoon, Doug Johnson, Lisa Ryder, Erin Tinklenberg, Eric Miller, Rachel Gordon, Cindy Amoroso, and myself were present at the meeting, we missed Jadevee. Doug Johnson provided an update on technology-related activities that occurred over the summer months, but the focus of the meeting was on communication plans related to technology issues that may arise, along with how the district might best communicate the status of these types of issues to staff, parents, and students when they occur, and in a consistent way. The discussion covered pre- and post-event communication processes, actually, I think they were prepared to cover a lot of the post-event, once it occurs, here's what we're going to communicate, but there was some good dialogue around what happens before that, and so, we did get into some good conversation around pre-event communication processes as well. The possibility of having a common webpage or destination for both staff and parents and students, where the status on technology and possibly other issues, busing, weather-related issues, those types of things, could easily be found in one place, seemed to have merit and warranted further discussion. We didn't lock it down, but we definitely wanted to explore that concept a little bit further. Erin reviewed a few of the key templates for proposed content that might be delivered to staff in instances such as system failures, or particular software application failures, or data breaches, some of the more serious types of events. We also discussed a new document to set expectations with families regarding equipment being loaned to students. For the past couple of years, we've not had any formal documentation around these expectations, but our experiences, particularly in the middle schools, have shown that such a document is clearly needed with students and parents alike. In the short term, the document will stand alone to help administration and staff clearly communicate expectations, but in the long run, they hope to get that language integrated into the student-parent handbooks. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 18th, here at Diamond Head, and unless, Eric, do you have anything else you want to add?
I think I've covered it.
Okay. This concludes the Technology Committee report for this evening.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions for the Technology Committee? All right, we'll move on to our Policy Review Committee, and that's chaired by Director Alt.
Thank you, Chair Schmidt. We last met on August 6th, and pretty straightforward, we have some of the policies that were moved forward for consideration this evening, and there were some others that were sent back to staff for further review, and we next meet on Thursday, September 6th.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for the Policy Committee? All right, we'll move to our Student Performance and Achievement Committee, known as SPA, chaired by Director Luth.
This will be a
This will be a rather unusual report tonight. And the reason for that is we met on Wednesday, August 15th, and we had an opportunity to look at MCA's scores. Now, the reason this will be rather unusual is that MCA's have not gone public yet and are considered embargoed at this point in time. And in fact, the three of us, as well as the district staff members there, all had to sign non-disclosure agreements. So I cannot speak to the content tonight, and so I will defer that to our next opportunity in September where you will also have an opportunity to see those results as they go public. Anything further that you'd like?
Only just to note that that's a new practice. Just so everybody understands.
From the state. From the state, yeah. From the...
It's all turned by the state.
So we all had our lawyers check the NDAs out before we signed them. And no, 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 no. But anyway, but it's all I can tell you is that, yeah, we met, we did see them, and that's it. Sorry.
That's kind of a teaser.
It really is, I know. It was the best I could pull together. Given the limitations.
All right, thanks. Yeah, any questions for the SPA Committee? All right, we will move to our Negotiating Committee, also chaired by Director Luth.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Next will be our Intermediate School District 917 report, and our representative on that board is Director Courier.
We met, typically, we meet the first Tuesday of each month, but we met this Tuesday. And it was a half-hour meeting that was just amazing because two of the board members had other board meetings that they had to go to. But essentially, 917 is opening a new building in Inver Grove Heights. And there are currently, let me give you the HR report there, they currently have only four licensed positions yet to fill. The amazing thing about 917, remember, they educate our most complicated students from our county area. So the licenses required there are very complicated. And of course, the programs are typically spread over the county. Well, with the opening of this new site and the director there of the special education programs is confident we can fill these licensed positions. So Stephanie White, in our audience, there should be no students not serviced. All our students should be able to be serviced in 917. That's not always been true. So we will have all our students serviced. And we will monitor that, both here at home. We will monitor whether our students get served in 917 and, of course, the 917 Board will monitor that. We are going to have Mark Suzick, who is the new superintendent there. He wants to come and visit our district. We will do that. And he will meet with Cindy and Stephanie White and me. And if there are other board members who want to meet with him, we will do that. And then I would like to arrange a tour for any board member that's interested, who would like to tour the new site in 917. And that's about it from the 917 report.
Well, thank you. That's actually very encouraging because I know we were concerned as a district, you know, about a lot of our students not getting placed properly because of that challenge. So that's good to hear, that confidence that they'll get those filled. Any other questions from the 917 report? All right, next we'll move to TIES, or should we refer to it as SourceWell now?
I've been referring to it as TIES. But we can certainly move to SourceWell.
Ties, and our representative is Director Alt.
Yes. So I will apologize in advance, I have a case of laryngitis, so if I can get through my report before I lose my voice, I'll be pleased. Although this board was on hiatus for the month of July, work on the TIES reorganization continued. There were two conference calls with TIES Executive Committee and member owners last month in which Lisa Ryder and I participated. As board members already know, through the course of these conversations, we were able to get an addendum to the proposed agreement, which included a cap on building maintenance fees for member districts, shored up clarity around building assets, as well as maintain privacy of student and district data. We were also assured of complete transparency both now and after an official audit with regard to member-owner payments and financial responsibilities. And I do have a request in with the Executive Committee for that information, unaudited. I would like to thank Lisa for our time working so closely to make sure that the final agreement fell within the legal authority granted me by this board and for ensuring the best possible outcome for 191. This process could have ended with much more dire financial results, and I am pleased that as a collective, we were able to turn this around. Turning to conversations at TIES this past month in August, I will start with information on the TIES building. The TIES Executive Committee is currently accepting offers on the building with the window of opportunity soon coming to a close. As has been previously discussed, the Executive Committee is interested in reaching a timely, financially sound agreement for the sale of the building. More on that as information is available. The Executive Committee also added cybersecurity insurance at no additional cost to members. This insurance allows TIES staff to monitor cybersecurity concerns as opposed to having individual members do so. Member-approved reorganization agreements continue to come in from member owners as board meetings occur throughout each of the member districts. All payments have been received from member districts, both those who are remaining and those who have left. One final housekeeping note, the Executive Committee will have to address TIES archives and where they will go. This represents approximately 50 years of records. Looking ahead and likely of interest to 191 staff, the TIES December Conference is still expected to take place. I know how our staff enjoys collaborative time together with colleagues from across the state at that conference. This ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Abigail. Any questions as it relates to TIES? All right.
Jim, just a comment. It's not really a question, but you know, the communication that they sent out was really good and they have a sign up. And I'm glad I was able to sign up, so thanks for making sure we got line of sight to some of that stuff because it's really, actually, they do a fabulous job of writing their communications and communicating to member districts, and that's a welcome relief. Thank you.
All right. There are several other board assignments that aren't necessarily committees. Any other assignments that board members would like to report on? Director Schatz?
It's that time of year again for the Foundation 191 Annual Golf Tournament fundraiser. This year is on September 14th. There's an option for both daytime golf and dinner in the evening, or just tickets just for the dinner. All proceeds, of course, go to grants and scholarships in our community and for our students. Tickets can be purchased at foundation191.org.
Thank you. Director Courier?
I have two reports. The first is on the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. On August 10th, the regular meeting of ASMD was held. It was the annual organizational meeting. Election of new executive committee members, legislative committee members, and officers was held. Officers elected were Chair Stephanie Levine, School Board Member Wes St. Paul-Mendota-Hitezegan, Vice Chair Andrea Keen, Vice Chair School Board Wizetta and Treasurer Aldo Sacoli, Superintendent Roseville Area Schools. Two presentations were given. The first was by Paula Forbes lawyer. It was an overview of the Cruz-Guzman Minnesota Supreme Court decision. This was a case brought against the state of Minnesota, the Minnesota Senate and House, MDE, and Dr. Casilius in November of 2015, although the plaintiffs were primarily parents of children enrolled in Minneapolis and St. Paul Public Schools. The second was by Dr. Rose Chu, Professor Emeritus of Metropolitan State on Teach Minnesota 2020 Campaign, which has as its main goal to increase and retain teachers of color and American Indian teachers. Both presentations were detailed, but they are available on the AMSD website. And then I have a Hall of Fame Committee report. Reminder to our audience, the purpose of the Burnsville High School Hall of Fame is to recognize individuals or organizations that have made exceptional achievements in their field, significant contributions to BHS, and/or unique contributions to their community on a local, state, national, or international level. And the class of 2018 is, while we're welcoming six new members at an induction ceremony on September 14th, now that's right around the corner. They are Ann Abicht, class of 1977, Dean LeBlanc, class of 1988, Lauren Miller, class of 1982, Amy Plum, class of 1980, Jason Stickt, class of 1990, and Jeffrey Van Nest, class of 1986. They will join 91 former students, staff, school groups, teams, and community members who have been inducted since the Hall of Fame recognized its first group of inductees during the school's 50th anniversary celebration in 2006. The reception begins at 4:30 in the Maraz Center and the program's at 5:30, and the game is at 7:00. And they're recognized again at the halftime, so I hope to see you all there and I'll be there as well. And the refreshments are fantastic, and they're free, so come and join us.
Well, thank you for those reports, yeah, and the Hall of Fame, what a great program that we have.
And our program, we recognize a variety. It isn't just athletes, it isn't just scholars or actors, so, yep.
One quick comment. I guess one starts to realize that they've reached a certain level of maturity when all the Hall of Fame inductees graduated after I did. Wow. That's still sinking in. First time that's ever happened in all my years.
Any other board member reports on other assignments? All right, thank you for all that. We will move to the business part of our meeting. First on the agenda is our consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event any board member wishes to discuss an item, we will remove that item for separate consideration. Do I have a motion? Well, first, before I take a motion, does anyone want to remove an item? All right, do I have a motion? So moved by Director Luth, second by Director Alt. Any discussion? See none? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Anyone oppose? The motion carries. We will move right into the new business part of our meeting. First on the agenda is to approve the proposed revisions and readopt the unchanged language in the 2018-2019 Propay Memorandum of Understanding with Burnsville Education Association. Presenting tonight will be Don Leek, our Principal on Special Assignment and Project Manager.
Thank you, Chair Schmid, Superintendent Amoroso, and Board Directors. I am here to present the recommendation for approval of the revisions and readopt the unchanged language of the Propay Memorandum of Understanding with the Burnsville Education Association. Major changes for this in the document that you received are updating the dates, calendar dates, removing building leadership team stipends for the special education cluster staff, who are now placed at all building sites and part of those staffs, and then removing sub-coverage for pre- and post-conference meetings with continuous improvement coaches.
All right, thank you. I will read the formal recommendation that the Board of Education approve the proposed revisions and readopt the unchanged language in the 2018-2019 Propay Memorandum of Understanding with the Burnsville Education Association. Do I have a motion? So moved by Director Schatz, second by Director Miller. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I've got to ask some questions here.
All right, Director Vandenberg.
Back in June, you were still waiting, it says till the end of the summer, on the percentage that met the building goal. Do you know what that number is? What percentage?
We do not, because the state will not release the MCA results until next Friday.
You mentioned the major changes, and the major changes being dates. I don't see anything that's changed in here that's a major change personally. This is the same program that we've run for the last three straight years, and in all three years, I remember saying we need to change the program. Yet here we are again, another year later, being asked to sign off on the same program that hasn't worked for several years from the perspective of impacting student achievement. I went to state statute and it basically says, you know, with regard to pay, that the base pay, at least 60% of any compensation increase on teacher performance should be using, number one, school-wide student achievement gains; number two, measures of student growth and literacy; and finally, number three, which is what this system more or less does, is an evaluation program. Now, Propay money is available, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the work that's in the Propay Memorandum of Understanding has to be done whether there's Propay dollars or not. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. If the state wanted, you know, essentially the last three years, every single year, every single teacher gets paid out at nearly 100%. If the state wanted to add dollars to the salary schedule, they would have put money on the general ed formula. They wouldn't have put it into a Propay system that said 60% of the compensation increases should be based on essentially student achievement gains or measures of growth. We have not seen any of those gains or growth in those several years. And yet, if we choose not to approve this evening, what happens to the money? So, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we don't approve this money tonight, the money goes away?
That is correct.
Okay? If I said, hey, go back to the drawing board and give me a new program, we don't have time, the money goes away. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay? So in essence, we're asked to either agree to this again and essentially pay out, you know, get more salary, you know, even though our student outcomes haven't changed a bit. Okay? And if we don't, we're essentially depriving teachers of money because nobody's taken the time in the three years we've been asking for changes to recommend changes to the program. I am not real happy, and this is not new, and I hope I'm not alone. I hope some of the other board members chime in. But this is unacceptable. I don't know what it's going to take to get us to get serious about using the Propay dollars to actually compensate teachers for good performance in the classroom. I'm going to, I'll leave it at that for now, but if other people have some things they want to comment about, I'd like to...
Yeah, and before that, I'll give a little background, you know, for sure on this year and a few other things. So, you know, this year, I won't say was unique, but due to circumstances, you know, that the board discussed, you know, at other sessions, we didn't begin in earnest the Propay discussions until the end of July for other reasons. And so a couple of the major changes, while you are correct, Director Vandenberg, that the language or the content hasn't changed. There are some significant changes in the funding. Some of the funding changes are, in the past, we would move from, or we would have pre-assessment and post-assessments, three pre-assessments, three post-assessments for each teacher, and we'd have to bring in substitute teachers during those sessions. And those were the equivalent of one period, you know, so six periods per teacher. So one of the changes is that'll now be not funded by the district. The teachers will be using their prep time, so they will be giving up six of their prep times over the course of the year, you know, for those assessments. And the smaller thing is the reduction of the stipends for some of the sped clusters. So from a financial perspective, one of the criteria, because of the tight timeline, was we will not draw from the general fund. And so we've met that requirement. As it relates to your concern, certainly around, I'll just summarize as the achievement part, you know, that's one of the three... part, you know, that's one of the three major goals in there. And as it relates to that, that's what's defined in the building goal, so to speak. And so the building goal traditionally, or on average, has averaged about 39, so around up 40% of achievement. So when it comes to the program, certainly, I think they're setting the goals properly to measure that part, but to your point, they still seem to get a significant payout because there's individual goals and there's team goals, but the one around student achievement hasn't been as widely achieved. And one of my comments, you know, the only way we would dip into the general fund is if we over exceeded that building goal this year, which would be a very good problem to have. That means that that achievement is far exceeding our expectations, which would be great. I'm not defending or countering, I just want to give background before other members spoke, and then we can continue from that, because it was a very tight timeframe in which, you know, we had to move this forward due to state statute.
If this wasn't the third year we've complained, I'd agree with you. This is not the first time. So this isn't a tight timeline, and I understand what you're saying, this particular year, but this is the third straight year that we've asked for recommendations of changes. And, I'm sorry, it wasn't July, this could have been started last July when we had the same conversation, and it never got started in it. And they voted twice to say yes to the, of course, if you're a teacher and you have a choice of either getting more money or not, you're going to vote yes to pretty much anything you put out there. So as a board, if we don't take action to correlate this additional incremental pay that the state intended to benefit teachers that are doing well and improving student outcomes, I'm not sure why we just, it doesn't make any sense for me to even have this. I would rather, and in fact, from my perspective, and it has nothing to do with not wanting to give every dime to the teachers, from my perspective, I have to vote no, because this is the third straight year that nobody's listening. And if for no other reason, to make a point, I'm voting no tonight.
All right, any other board member questions or comments? Director Miller.
Chair Schmid, you went over quite a lot. I just want to make sure we're very clear. This proposed 2018-2019 memorandum is budgeted to be 100% paid by the money that is provided for Propay, correct?
That is correct, out of the Propay Fund, yes.
Okay. And then I would voice the same concern, or amount of concern that Director Van den Boom has. If you're going to call a program incentive, there should be some standards that you have to reach to be incented. Otherwise, you might as well just call it a transference of money. So I'll express that also.
All right, thank you. Any other board member comments, questions? Director Lou.
I'm going to concur with both my colleagues. I've been around since I was part of bringing this in in the first place. I remember sitting in your position a couple of years ago, Director Schmid, Chair Schmid, imploring all of you to vote for this at the start of the contentiousness that has been brought up by Director Van den Boom as well. And I have been loyal to this program, but I'm not, I can't continue to be. I also will be voting no tonight, because it's time for change. And it appears to me that the only way we can implement change is through some drastic action. I hate to, like anybody, leave some money on the table. But when I look at payouts that we're talking about, teachers are eligible, each teacher's eligible for up to $1,800. The esteemed building goal is $300 of that. $1,200 of the 1,800 is made up of completing your professional learning plan and participating in the coaching and observations. Has no direct correlation on performance whatsoever. Is something that they should be doing and should not be incentivized, have to be incentivized to do those things. In my world, which is completely different than in public education, those are expectations of my job as a professional, to be a participant in coaching, learning opportunities, to be putting together my career goals and my learning plan. I don't get paid extra for that. And so I am going to take the difficult stand of saying no tonight.
All right, thank you. Any other board, Director Alt.
Thank you, Chair Schmid. Is this a perfect agreement? I think everybody would agree this is not a perfect agreement. Are there elements, excuse me, of this agreement that could be improved? Absolutely, and that's, Director Van den Boom, to your point, you know, that's not new. Propay also offers an opportunity for us. Granted, it needs more time for negotiation. The process this year was not what we would have hoped. And I believe that there is value in the coaching model. I think the key with Propay is looking at the coaching that the teachers need and teachers ask for. And perhaps that's, you know, that's one area where we can all come together and look at how we can leverage Propay more around that coaching model, but to throw the baby out with the bathwater and lose that funding makes me concerned.
Thank you. Director Carrier.
Well, I've been around long enough to the original history of Propay. And it came around in the years where the state was not funding us at all. And it was the only funding we could get to fund teacher salaries at all. And we wrote for the grant so we could at least have something to offer in a teacher's settlement. So that's how long ago this came about, and then now, this has now become the elephant in the room, and we've had to live with this. I have feelings like Abigail. I look at this kind of in the broadest sense of the word as a staff development tool. When I look at our salary schedule, this is really not much compared to the high-end on our salary schedule. And it's a tool for site administrators to use in coaching. I mean, when I was a site administrator, to have coaches help the site administrator work with teachers and guide them and direct them to be a better professional was invaluable. So I look at this in that kind of a context. So I'm going to support this. It's, believe me, imperfect, and if I could get rid of this and just put this, these funds into the regular general fund, that's where it belongs. But it was sort of one of those things that the legislature used to not fund public education appropriately. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? You know, I'll just add a comment from my perspective, you know, versus, it is one of those things, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge, you know, what you said, Director Van den Boom, Director Lou. That's a fact. We all know it, we've lived it. I've been here eight years, it's been the same. I'm fearful that if we do vote this down, we won't get the chance to get it back, because now there's different dynamics. We did not approve it one year, as some of you have been here long enough remember that, but that was at a time where we were able to get it back the next year. Everyone kind of regrouped.
Actually, that wasn't us that didn't approve.
No, no, I understand, I understand, yeah.
We didn't, there wasn't a year that we didn't approve it when it came before us. There was a year that it never went to a vote.
Yes, but the circumstances were different then in the sense that we had a high degree of confidence that we'd be able to reinstate it the next year. I don't have that same high degree of confidence that we would ever be able to reinstate it, you know, if we let it go. I think, you know, while we want to say, you know, nothing's changed, which is true as far as the content and the goals, we have to look at our team, our administrators, to make that happen. We can't say, ah, it's all because of, you know, somebody doesn't want to come to the table, they don't want to talk about it. You know, we have to look at our negotiations committee, you know, for next year or sooner kind of thing to have those things. So, long story short, I'm going to support it on the hope that we can figure this out. Right now, after this year, quite frankly, we'll be to zero balance. So there'll be tough discussions they have anyways, you know, after this year, so. Director Lou.
I want to clarify my position on this. I do not, I do not want to see this passed, and I do not want to see it reinstated. The programs, the things that are in here that are good, we should figure out a way, as a board, to fund those, if they're that important to us. I am not throwing the baby out of the bathwater, I'm just throwing it out. It's time to get rid of this. So I don't want to be, have someone else paraphrase that I'm throwing out the baby with the bathwater, or that I'm hoping for reinstatement in the future, because I'm not. My vote is a permanent one. Permanent. Hopefully to never return, certainly in anything of the nature of this format. So I'm not, I don't want to make it sound, I don't want people to think that I'm like, oh, I'm just doing this because I'm being, whatever. I'm not being flippant. I am being very serious about, this is a strategic decision that I am making as one of seven board members that says, no more. And I'm going to leave it at that.
I'm just, final thoughts from me, and I understand what you're talking about and the need to keep as much money as we have. It is, it's, sorry. Honestly, between this meeting and the last meeting, my big issue is it's about students first and adults second. And I view these, I view what we did with the teacher contract as adults first, students second, and I view what we're doing with this as adults first, students second. And whether they're close or not, both of them, in my view, have the wrong, slightly wrong priorities. I understand the need to keep every nickel that we have, because what we did last, the last meeting is going to cause lots of grief next year, and you're going to need every nickel. And so I understand that piece. But we can't keep doing the same thing and expecting any different result. And our results have been going the wrong way. So, again, thank you, but last thoughts.
Thank you. Appreciate all the discussion. With that, we have the motion on the table. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The motion will carry five to two. Moving on, we will now move to approve on a first reading basis changes to the policy 532, use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove students with IEPs from school grounds, and policy 608, instructional services, special education. Our presenter will be Stephanie White, who's our Director of Student Support Services. Welcome, Stephanie.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair Schmid. Good evening, Superintendent. Good evening, Board of Directors. I'm here to get approval for, in a first reading of these two policies. The first is policy 532. The changes to this policy, some of the redundant language that we discussed in the committee, as well as a sentence under section two, using the word exception, and so comparing that to MSBA, as well as other districts' R size, that was a change that we felt that paragraph became more clear taking that out. The rest of the language stated or describes students with an IEP plan throughout the policy, and because that is the purpose of the whole plan, we decided to take that out, just because it became redundant.
All right. I'll read the motion. Let me go back to the top here, one second. So the motion is to approve, did you go through both?
Nope, I can't.
Yeah, please go through both.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
District policy 608 is, again, a change to align to MSBA policy. So, under section three, parts D and E are taken out. There is a parents' rights brochure that we give all families that detail the specifics on how they can manage the due process when they are entering it with a student with a disability. And MSBA took these out because it's redundant and could be confusing communication to them.
All right. With that, I'll read the recommendation to approve on a first reading basis changes policy 532, use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove students with IEPs from school grounds, and policy 608, instructional services, special education. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Director Carrier, second by Director Schatz. Any questions or discussion? Director Lou.
More of a question of curiosity. We have a policy that explicitly brings out the point of an IEP, but when I look at the changes we're making to this policy, most of them are removing the term IEP. And so I'm just, could you give just a little bit of clarity as to why that is? Because some of these now read, you know, they were very specific to students with IP, and now we take out the word IP, and it's really, it applies to every student, but that's not what this policy is labeled as. So I'm confused by that.
Yeah. I think you bring up a good point, and I think it's exactly why, as a district, we should do that, because students are general ed students first. And so because this policy is addressing an overall student with a disability, we don't need to repeat that over and over and over again. It helps us to align how we treat all students, that all students are treated similarly throughout the procedures that are described in that policy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the question.
Any other questions or comments? See none? All those in favor of the motion on the table, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Last on our agenda is to approve on a first reading basis new policy 511, fundraising. Presenting tonight will be Lisa Reiter, our executive director of Business Services.
Thank you and good evening. As mentioned, this is a brand-new policy to us. It is a policy that does exist under the MSBA model policies, and so that is the origin of it. As we take a look at it, there's a few things I just want to point out, since it is a brand-new policy. Under Roman numeral two, general statement of policy, this policy is intended to apply to all groups under our district federal tax ID number, as well as entities that have their own tax ID number but are 501(c)(3) and 501(c)(4) status that are supported and connected to our schools. And then as you, there's an area of definitions, I won't go through those in detail, but when you go back over to standards under Roman numeral four, there's a few things here I want to point out, and that is that this is intended to apply to fundraising activities that are held at our schools by our own employees or school-sponsored organizations or school-affiliated organizations, as well as by those initiated by individual employees. So that's a little unique for many of our policies and doesn't get to that granular level. All the items that are purchased become the property of ISD 191. There are some restrictions for the use of those funds, and there is a requirement that any entity with fundraising exceeding $20,000 will be responsible for required filing and payment of the Minnesota State sales tax. So it does make mention of that as well. In addition, one of the main reasons for this policy being recommended is the crowdfunding, which is covered next. And the definition of crowdfunding is a practice of raising small amounts of money from a large number of people, and typically via the internet. So with that, there's some itemized things listed here where we are, this policy calls for pre-approval by the building administrator for crowdfunding. Again, any monies or items secured through this process would become the property of 191. We have to make sure that during this process, that they comply with student privacy and other requirements such as FERPA. And that the crowdfunding account must be set up through an ISD 191 account and not a personal account. And they would work with our business office to make that, to accomplish that. Approval is required for this fundraising of not just crowdfunding, crowdfunding but other, all fundraisings. And so that's listed under G. There's also some requirements with regard to what those activities need to look like. So I won't go through those in detail, but those are listed. There's one item that I do want to follow up with and just make sure. And that is in letter J, under G2. It reads, use only vendors on the Department of Education's approved vendor list. And so I'm personally just struggling in finding that list when I went to go and verify where it was. So I'm going to try and research that a little bit more and make sure that we have that and possibly link it right in here. And then there's reporting that is required under this policy as well. That reporting is, depending upon the information that's being shared with, with different parties, it's listed. So I won't go through that in detail, but it does have an area of reporting. That concludes my review of this new policy.
Thank you, Lisa. So the motion is to approve on a first reading basis, new policy 511, fundraising. Do I have a motion? So moved by Director Van de Boom. Second by Director Miller. Any discussion or questions? Director Carrier?
Lisa, should there be anything in here, like a statement violations of this policy will be reported to? Because I can see where, I mean, we know of, I personally know of cases, not in this district luckily, but I know of individuals who have stolen money. So I can assume there, there could be people who could take the logo of a school and put it on the Internet and...
Yeah, it does have one phrase in here. I'm just trying to find it right now that refers to that. But I was also reading the advertising policy, so I might be confused with that one. So that's a good point. Let me research that a little too.
Yeah, for, like violations of this policy will be reported to or, I mean, something that there's a consequence of this policy.
Director Van de Boom?
Yeah, just a quick question. So Lisa, how far does this extend, you know, in the sense of, are all booster clubs, you know, they're not all 501(c)(3)'s, for example, right? So there's a number of clubs and stuff that have fundraising activities. Would they not fall under the policy or would they fall under the policy? Or are they all required to have a 501(c)(3) or?
So a 501(c)(3) is for tax deductible. 501(c)(4) is for not tax deductible and usually it's due to the fact that there's lobbying involved.
Okay.
When we have organizations that are affiliated with our schools, typically they are organized for the purpose of supporting our schools. And so therefore, they are covered under this policy. And they are typically one of the two of those types of statuses. And we do want this to include them.
Okay. Are you concerned, part of my concern as I was reading is that, you know, it says there's an annual report out as an example to the board and there's dozens of these things, right?
This, this will be challenging for us to get our arms around all of it. That's true.
Is it, so from the perspective of report out, I mean, so you have the ones that are associated with the school's ID number? Do you think they're separate report outs, I guess is the question. Could one be?
So I see the connection here being in when an outside organization that have their own tax ID number, but they're making a donation to us for something?
Yeah.
That that's where we then would need to inquire. Where did the funds, you know, was there fundraising that prepared, or resulted in these funds? And we gained some information there and we start getting the information out to them. This is a new policy for us, so if approved, then that is something we're going to have to do a lot of communicating around and getting the word out so that people can, we might have to start initially at getting the information after the fact, but get them to the point where they're telling us beforehand and seeking that approval.
I'm really just worried about all the staff time it might take to compile this stuff.
It could be, it could be interesting.
It could be significant for small, fairly small dollar amounts potentially, so.
Point taken.
Director Miller?
And you actually kind of hit on it at the end there, Lisa, that this is actually probably more of a comment. Is I would encourage us to think around, education around this policy should it come to be. Because I think to Director Carrier's point, we probably are going to have violation. But I would suspect it's more going to be unintentional violation. We have lots and lots of little groups out there. So I think it's important, just, I'm just making a point that it'd be important that we make sure and educate about this if, should we end up putting this forward.
Thank you. Director Luth?
As I read through this policy, I mean, to me, one of the, the goals that it's trying to bring is a higher level of specificity to this whole process. But when I read the second sentence of Section 2 of the General Statement of Policy, it says, "The school board also recognizes a need for some constraint to fundraising activities for becoming too numerous and overly demanding on employees, students, and the general public," period. That's pretty great to me. And I'm concerned that that is not specific enough. And who makes that kind, I mean, what, when does it become overly demanding on employees? When do the fundraising become too numerous? Because I'm pretty sure I could find people today on either side of that fence, very easily. And that's in our General Statement of Policy. And so I'm concerned about that sentence. I really am. And that it could be misused or misunderstood or misapplied because it really does lack specificity.
Thank you. Director Carrier?
Should we send this back to the Policy Committee without taking any action?
Well, I'm thinking that, but I have several comments as well before we get through them.
Okay.
But I want to make sure all the other board members.
I might ask something else, but go ahead.
All right. So Lisa, I, yeah, I have several questions. I realize this is a new policy. This is a needed policy. My first question is under, is actually under the General Statement Policy as well. I can assure you that there are many ad hoc fundraising groups in this district that do not need to file taxes. They do not need to file anything and they do not have a 501(c)(3) or a 501(c)(4). And so this policy needs to address ad hoc, I'll give you an example. There was a small group of students, five, who got a, they got the proper sponsorship, all that from the staff, the principal. They did, and then I'll get in some other questions. They did crowd, or one of us crowdfunding and all that stuff, raised $200, you know, for their activity and that was it. Boom. They weren't going to file anything. They didn't have a 501(c)(3) or (4). We have to accommodate for what I'll call ad hoc groups that don't have to file anything based on IRS requirements. So that would be my first comment under that. My next comment is under, you know, the crowdfunding. I agree that we, it should go through district controls and all that stuff. But with that said, what, it's not clear to me what the time is, so. It's, I won't say that because I don't want to offend. I have not found things work efficiently when you make a request. And so is this a week to get the setup? Is it two weeks? Is it a month? I mean, what is our SLA, so our service level agreement, if we're going to require this? So that, I'm, I'm the sponsor of this program or this fundraising. I come to what, it's your office or whatever office. What, what should be my expectations that when this will be ready to go, if we're going to put this in policy? Because I don't want to start getting the claims, we missed our fundraising opportunity because it took a month, you know, for us to get this. So we have to set the expectation of what the SLA is, you know, if we're going to require that. So that's, that's my second comment. My third comment is under the approval section, Particular Item 2E. So just on Tuesday, the entire football team dispersed throughout the ISD 191 community for their only fundraiser. And guess what it was? Door-to-door solicitations. I don't want to see that in here because, and that's, that's just a football program. I know other programs, softball does it. They do door-to-door solicitations. I don't think we should be discouraging their number-one and only fundraiser opportunity in our policy. I mean, that's a radical change to say, this board, I won't, I can't support it if we're going to discourage that because that's their primary way of raising funds for some of these programs. You certainly can.
What that's really getting at is, years ago, the common elementary way of raising funds was to have the brochure of whatever you were selling. And the expectation was they would go around their neighborhood door-to-door. With safety concerns and a lot of other things today, that's really where that discouraged. We're not saying that groups can't do it. We're just really encouraging, especially people in those younger grades.
We should clarify the language then. Because it plainly says just discourage. So I read that as a senior who's driving around selling me a football card or the baseball kid who's bringing salt into my basement.
We didn't put, we didn't put prohibit.
Yep, but discourage is...
Which is what it was originally, yeah.
Yep, somebody will read it. And then I did also have the same concern. So I can probably assure you, even though you couldn't find the vendor list, I doubt whoever the vendor was for this Blaze football card isn't on that list. And so they'd be twice disqualified by our policy and all of a sudden football wouldn't have any fundraising. And I'm just using that because I just bought one Tuesday. That's the one that came to my mind. I think they target my house. But, so those are just my concerns. So with that, I'm sure there's other comments. I do think it should go back for further refi, I realize, and you did a good job of, this is MSBA language. So no fault of the committee or anything like that of, you know, it's, it's good. I think it evolves. We need this policy for sure because there are too many loose ends, to your point. And I won't say that I suspect there's any money laundering or anything going on. But I can assure you, if this policy was in place two years ago, I broke it because, you know, this small group I happen to know, I put the $200 in my account until they got a district account and then I wrote them a check. You know, so, so I'm a little, little, you know, concerned, yeah.
And this is why we appreciate the feedback from board members on the committee.
So I do think we're, you know, I think we're on the right path here. And that's why I want to make sure that, you know, we get all our i's dotted and t's crossed.
You're the first person who will be educating here.
Yes. Any other comments after that?
The officer, the officer will be waiting for you at the end of the meeting, Jim.
I just think the passion around the comments show that, how deeply a policy of some sort is needed because today there's nothing.
Yeah.
And I really do, Lisa, thanks for coming up and presenting. We knew when we went through policy that this was going to be a challenging one to begin with. I think when we send it back, I think it's going to be challenging even to kind of do it because there are just so many different things that are going on, which is really good. A lot of it, 98% of it is really healthy and good and all that stuff. It's, so policies tend to try to catch all of those, the ones that are going to be bad. But I concur and it's, it definitely needs to go back. But we're going to probably have to figure out how to draw some lines or have the policy break and create categories of fundraising or something to that, in order for this to work. The other comment I want to make is almost every year when we do the audit, you know, the one, you know, one of the one loose ends on the audit is almost always one of those little checking accounts that's not, you know, that stayed open longer than it should or wasn't closed appropriately and so forth, so.
You mean Jim's?
Yeah, right, yeah. Thank you.
That's a new one. We'll have to put him on the audit list next year.
That's right.
Glad, Chair Schmidt. Anyway, thank you though, Lisa, for presenting.
I think Superintendent Dan, yeah?
Just one comment about the policy. The intent of the policy is not in any way to prohibit fundraising or prevent people from fundraising. It really is to encourage fundraising and to ensure that when that fundraising is being done, it's being done in a way that very frankly can protect the person or the group that's raising those funds so that they make sure that the way that it's being done, there, there's no tail that might come back around with them. And so we'll definitely take that back. And probably when we bring it back the next time or give you a little more anecdotal prior to bringing it back the next time, that might address some of the concerns and comments you had tonight too.
Thank you. Director Luth?
If, if I could beg Director Carrier's indulgence, I'll play historian for a minute. There's a reason it's not here and it's not due to lack of trying in the past. Okay? This is, this, I, 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 I agree, Director Van de Boom, that this, this is, this is going to be a challenge even sending it back. But I do think that makes sense. But I also encourage all of us that we're all going to have to give a little here. Okay? This is one of those where you're not going to get everything you want exactly the way you want. And I, to the Policy Committee, take that to heart as well because...
I think we should send it back to MSBA.
Well, then we wouldn't have anything. Never mind. I won't say that. Nope, 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 nope. Going to stop. But I, I, I do wholeheartedly support getting some kind of a policy in play. And it's going to be hard to even do what the superintendent just talked about because policy by its very nature tends to be restricting, not enlightening and opening, or if you will. So, good luck.
So I think based on that, since we already had a motion and a second, I have to refer this to committee. And so I would need a motion for that. Refer to committee, okay. And then I'll need a second.
Second.
Second, I need to ask if there's any questions or discussion to refer to committee. Okay, all those in favor of referring this back to committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And we'll refer it back to committee. All right. With that, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Before we do that, we're going to move into workshop to talk about board priorities for the 2018-2019 school year. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved by Director Alt, second by Director Van de Boom. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.